The June 13th Planning Commission Meeting will not come to order. Madam Secretary, please note that all members are in attendance. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Secretary, if you'd start by introducing yourself to our citizens out here and then the rest of the staff.
Stacy Webb, Secretary for Planning and Development.
Lyndsey Meanda, Legal Advisor to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Ricky Compton, Planning and Development Director.
Jeffrey Loomer, the Planner for the Parish.
Ken Dawson, Chief Executive Assistant at Ascension Parish.
Tori Crosby, Engineer.
Tim Ward, Engineering.
That it? Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is the Chair's Comments, and I don't have any to make tonight, so we'll move on to the public comment period for any items on the agenda that aren't open for public hearing. Madam Secretary, did anyone sign up for that?
No.
No? Okay, we'll finish with that. Next is the approval or denial of the minutes of the May 9th Planning Commission Meeting. Assume everybody had a chance to read the minutes, hear motion.
How moving, we approve the minutes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Just a second.
I'm sorry? Gasper, sorry. Next is a public hearing to approve or deny the following family partition, the Josie Harrelson property lots A-2A through A-2E. Yeah, Jeff, just a moment, ma'am, we'll have him kind of summarize and then we'll ask you to talk. You can stand there.
The applicant is requesting a family partition of their lots into five different lots. They'll be, this subdivision is located along Louisiana Highway 22, and they're going to create a new 50-foot private servitude of passage that will access the five lots that run along those lots. And the applicant's giving it to their three sons and one of the lots to their granddaughter. Their names are indicated on the plat, and they are requesting approval of the plat. And staff is recommending approval.
Okay, ma'am?
Ellen Jackson with Macklin &amp; Associates, representing the developers of the property, and just asking for your approval.
Madam Secretary, are there any folks that signed up for public comment?
None.
Okay. Questions, comments? Entertainer motion for approval or denial?
Move to approve.
I'll second the motion. Did you get both of those? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, public hearing to approve or deny the following family partition, the Quaid property, lots B-2B-1A through B-2B-1E. Jeff?
The applicant is requesting a family partition. They're wanting to, basically, the lots are located behind what is currently the phage sealed condominiums, and this new family partition will be accessed off of that private access drive that goes through those condominiums. And they're going to be creating five lots in that rear, and they're going to be putting a culvert over the ditch that's in the rear of those condominiums. The new private servitude of passage will be called Alcidian Drive, and they will be dedicating these lots to their family members as indicated on their plat, and they're requesting approval. Basically, staff comments were just to ensure that the sage sealed condominiums were on board, and so that we had them sign the party servitude agreement that's located within the packet, just to make sure that they are aware that the family partition is going on and that these family partitions will have access to that, through that private gate that's in front of the condominiums. And we also wanted to make sure that they were aware that they were going to have to cross the ditch that was in the rear, and so that they have a letter from the Drainage Department just explaining to them exactly what has to be done in order for them to access the family partition that's going to be, the family partition that they are proposing. Other than that, we're just asked, staff is just wanting them to verify that the pipeline right away that they're showing on the plat. And with all those things, we're recommending approval of the family partition.
Is the applicant here to make comments?
Ellen Jackson again with Macklin &amp; Associates, and we are confirmed with everything that needs to be done in order to get the plat signed, just asking for your approval.
Okay. Did anyone sign up for public comment? Entertain a motion for approval?
Approve.
Gasper?
I'll second the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
It's passed. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Public hearing to approve or deny the following campsite final plat. And if you would, since we have a lot of folks out there, would you explain what a campsite really is?
A campsite subdivision is basically a subdivision that is taking place off a public road and will only be accessible by, well, it'll only be accessible, I believe, for three months out of the year by water alone and won't be accessible through land. And it's a special provision in our ordinance that allows them to go through, just go through that process without having to provide any additional amenities like drainage or a new road or whatnot. So basically, that's what the applicant is requesting at this point. They are wanting to basically take that one lot and dividing it in two. Lot one will continue to be accessed by UPR Drive, which is a private access drive. But Lot Two will be completely accessible by the Amity River Division Canal. And really, that's kind of the gist of it, and we're recommending approval of the plat. It meets all the standards of the campsite subdivision ordinance.
Any comments from the applicant? Any public comment, sign up?
No.
Motion to approve or deny the campsite final plat for the Norman Knight property lots one and two.
I'll second.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And passes, thank you. Next is a public hearing to recommend approval or denial to the Parish Council of the following servitude revocation.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I have to recuse myself, I live in this subdivision.
Okay.
So I'll step down.
Thank you. For those in the audience, we fall under the state ethics laws, and we are required to recuse ourselves if we have an interest in a certain item. In most cases, it's financial, in other cases, if it affects your property or relative property, you leave the room. All right, staff, this is for Oak Alley Estates, second filing lot 99. Comments?
The applicant is requesting to revoke a portion of the 12-foot utility servitude that you can find in your packet. It's just showing a small little triangular piece, and so it's just that small portion of it, and in your packet, we also included a legal description of exactly what they're wanting to revoke, since it's kind of an odd shape that they're protruding into. Since it's a utility servitude, we got letters from, or they obtained letters from all the utility companies that service in that area, and each of them had no objections to the servitude revocation.
So y'all recommending approval?
Staff doesn't typically give, the planning staff doesn't typically give a recommendation of approval, we just go off of what the utility companies and who uses the actual servitude.
Jeff? Mr. Chairman, I've got a question for him. It's stating that they want a portion of it revoked, do we know exactly what they're asking for? I mean, just to give an open portion, that could be anything from an inch to 12 feet.
Nineteen square feet. In the very rear of the packet, the plat actually shows, as a visual, shows what that portion of it is, but also-
Is that all they're asking for?
Well, yes, yes. And then in the very rear of the package, we also have like a legal description because they'll outline and be put into the actual ordinance when it goes to council.
Are you the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if you'd like to.
Thank you, gentlemen, for serving, thank you for the time you give, and thank you that I have this opportunity to present, happen. Though I've been experienced in building for some time-
Excuse me, sir, could you give us your name?
I'm sorry, Roy Domain.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Though I've done 15 other homes in Oak Alley, none of them were in a situation where we would get into a cul-de-sac or any type of radius on one of the lots. When you get into a cul-de-sac, parish ordinance allows that the 25-foot building setback be reduced to 12 and a half feet. And when you looked at the placement of this house, I'm currently under contract to build this pre-sold home for this family, the placement of it, in working with the Architectural Review Committee, is that they did not want the garage on the opposite side of the lot, but wanted it on the right side. And so we looked at it, we looked at the 12 and a half foot reduction rather than the 25, and the lineup was going to work out well, and all that was great. But come to my surprise is when I got the slab survey back, they said, "You're three foot into it." And I said, "Uh-uh, I'm not." And they said, "Yeah, three-foot landscape servitude." And I said, "What is that?" And they said, "It's on this map, remember?" So when you look at it, it's just not clear, you know, even of all my years of experience, the first time I've learned that there is a three-foot landscape servitude which then pushes the 12 and a half foot, or the 25-foot total servitude, within that distance, three foot pushes the 12 and a half foot utility servitude back. Never realized that, okay? So when we made the arc, the front corner encroached, okay? And so that is what the issue is that I'm facing. And if I may take a minute, this is my request, you know, it's sincere in the fact that I sincerely didn't know, I've made an error, I'm here to say, keep the front corner of the building intact instead of cutting a triangle on it, but I would, if I was given permission by the body, I would like to address the three-foot servitude, the landscape servitude, which is only in a few subdivisions in this parish, and I would like to share with the body why I think this is going to be a problem for future residents. If I'm given permission, I would do that. I know the main thing I'm here for is to talk about the servitude.
Do you want to do that now? Could we bring that up at another time? What's your-
I wasn't around when Oak Alley Estates was approved, but it would be my speculation that we don't currently require a three-foot landscape servitude in our cross-section. I think that's something the developer wanted to put in there.
The developer did, okay.
I mean, we, so-
So it's not our, it's not us, it's the developer?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's like the parish is on your side.
Well, but the request here is that, let's look at what happened here. You know, I was in the early, early stages of buying lots with this developer, and the developer, you know, had this visual plan from the air that said, "Oh, just imagine, you know, 20, 30 years from now, walking through here, driving through here, the beautiful oak trees." All right, well, let's take and let's go down to New Orleans, or let's go down to any street where there is huge live oaks, not just a pin oak, not just a maple tree, live oaks. You know how big they get, right? I'm concerned, as a resident, I've shared this with all of the owners I have built for, once I have to spend the $300 to put that tree where they tell me that it has to be put, and I move in, and I get all the approvals, cut the thing down. Because what's going to happen 15, 20 years from now, when the canopy of this oak, the root system is as large, now we're going to be tearing up the streets, which is public. Now, who's going to pay for those utilities when those root systems start tearing up the fiber optic lines, start tearing up E-Tale's lines? That is a concern that I would like to bring before this body, and that P&amp;Z and planning would be made aware of, that I don't think we should allow such in our developments. I really feel it's a future detriment to our neighborhoods and our residents and to our public funding. But thank you very much for the consideration of this variance. Thank you very much.
Okay. And staff, if you would, put that down on your list, I think it's worth looking at, as we look at new subdivision plat system, bring that question up.
I have a question. This is a utility servitude we request for revocation. Now, my understanding, the code 17-4032 states in the front, a minimum of a 12-foot servitude. Are we, has this gotten a variance?
Due to the nature of this, they're basically revoking that portion of it. You're correct, and along every subdivision that we create in this parish, there's a 12-foot utility servitude where all the utilities run. And they're basically asking to revoke a portion of that because their building protrudes into what is currently the 12-foot utility servitude.
Which would be less than 12 feet?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Can I clarify that we did call Dottie, LA 1 call, and from the corner of the building to the point where Energy is, and Energy is the closest one in, we're six foot away. And the closest one to that is E-Tale, which is another four feet.
And each of the utilities has already said no opposition to this, right? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Concerns? Okay. Do I hear a motion to, I'm sorry, anybody sign up for public comment? Okay. Entertain a motion to-
Mr. Chairman, based on the fact that we have no objections from any of the utility companies, and Energy being the closest specifically states they have no objection to it, I'd like to make a motion that we send them a recommendation of approval of this, as written.
I'd like to second Mr. Nizo's motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. And next is a, I'm sorry, oh, yeah, I figured he was watching the screen. Next is a public hearing to approve or deny the following overlay zone site plan review, pre-development meeting for neighborhood business overlay site plan for ABB Inc.
The applicant is asking for a neighborhood business overlay site plan review, as you stated. This property is at 18321 Swamp Road, and they are looking at placing an office, an office, a mobile office in the neighborhood business overlay. The Planning Commission also approved a similar request back in April 11, 2012, later, earlier this year, and the commission approved that mobile office for the location with a stipulation of a two-year, with a stipulation of two years from the date of occupancy. The applicant has made another request to allow for an additional mobile office to be located in the rear of this same property. Staff is recommending to deny this additional mobile office based on the applicant making a similar request in April. Staff believes that the placement of an additional temporary building is not in the intent of the neighborhood business overlay district.
And is the applicant here?
Evening, gentlemen, my name is Trent Didier, and I represent ABB Inc. And basically, the fact of the matter is that we're expanding, which is a good thing. In these day and times, it's a good, a real good thing. We probably have approximately 150 employees on site, and within the next five years, we plan to add another 50 more. And these are good jobs. These are welding jobs, these are administrative jobs, jobs that a man can raise a family on. And we're trying, we're just basically out of space is what it is. And we know that our facility as it stands is inadequate, and we need the space to house our expanding workforce. We know that we're going to either have to in the next, we plan, we're in the pre-planning development of trying to find a new facility, or build one from scratch that'll meet our needs. And either way, these plans take time. And we'd asked the board for 24 months of the installation of the last one. Situations have come up, we've taken on some new employees, and we have to have a place to put them. We would like to stay in Ascension Parish. Approximately 60% of our employees, our people, live in the parish. And so we're asking the council for this temporary solution, we're only asking for this temporary office to house five employees, it's 14 by 60 office trailer temporarily, to be imparted directly behind our main facility, would not be seen from the street, only be seen from the rear. Our rear neighbor is Shaw Industrial. And so we're asking for your indulgence for this temporary solution to accommodate our employees for a period of just 24 months, same as the other one. And in that time, we believe that we'll have a plan in place to relocate our facility to another location that'll better fit our needs. We're just asking to work with us up until that time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
Mike Eads?
I'm glad he signed up, because I was going to call on him if he didn't.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'm Mike Eads with Ascension Economic Development Corporation. I'd like to express our support for the applicant's request. In particular, you know, I think the circumstances here, you know, they are in a growth mode, they're out of room to office space, you've already approved one, I know there's got to be a limit somewhere, but, you know, I think if I was sitting in your place and they were coming to tell me they were going to put a stick, another one right out on the street, I might look at it a little differently, but this one, as I understand it, is behind the plant, not visible from any roads, not adjacent to any residential. So I would encourage you to approve the applicant's request. I think you did the correct thing on the first request in putting a time limit on it, and I would suggest that if, should you make the recommendation to approve, that you let the time limit on this wouldn't be consistent with the other, so that they would both expire at the same time. And that would conclude my remarks. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Spike Graham?
Good evening, gentlemen, thank you, Milton Cluett. I live on Swamp Road, and we saw the sign that was placed out there, and I was supposed to stop and visit it several weeks ago, and I sort of put it off. As you know, I was a commissioner before, and I visit every site before it came before. So today, I stopped and I visit that site. I was impressed with it, it's a unique company. I would be against it if it would be putting it on the road again, I would be putting it, I would be fully against it. I contacted approximately eight neighbors in the neighborhood, and none of them had any, did not disagree with it, they had no problem with it. Some of them expressed the fact that, what happened if they do leave the parish? Do we get, we don't get the taxes, we don't get the jobs. So I'm asking this council to please consider giving them the opportunity to put that trailer since, I went and walked behind the building, it will not be visible from the road. I, like Mike Eads, would suggest that you put a time limit on it. They plan on hiring anywhere between 40 to 50 new employees. I would think that over 50% of those would be parish employees, would be from the parish. I would like to go on record as saying, we support it, some of the residents on Swamp Road, which we are affected by that, we pass by it every day, and we would be willing to say, as long as this is temporary, for a certain amount of time, like 24 months, which was done, we have no objections. Thank you.
Very much. Any others? Okay. Any questions? I'd like to address the applicant again if you'd come up. Certainly, if you would, sir.
When we approved the last one, have y'all established residency in it as of yet?
Not sure we have.
Okay. Would you be, have any objections if we were to say approve it based on the initial occupancy of the first one, which would give you the same expiration date on the second one?
That would be very agreeable for us.
And be agreeable to you, okay. Okay, then, that's another question I had.
Anybody else?
One question. What's the maximum capacity for this temporary trailer?
We're just going to house four additional employees.
You're going to house four additional, what's the maximum capacity? How often would you put 10 in there?
Tentative, probably, probably just about four. It's not a very large trailer, it's 14 by 60, so, and they have, the service department, so they have, you know, testing equipment and things for the instrumentation, and they sometimes bring customers in there, so we wouldn't want to crowd them, so I think four would probably be the limit.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Didier, congratulations on your business success, by the way, and it's unfortunate you didn't foresee this need when you requested the other facility, but this one is much less intrusive, it's not visible from the highway at all, and I'm glad that no one in the area seems to object to it. But assuming you'll have continued success, what makes us think you won't be back here next month?
Well, and that's a valid question. It's a good, it's a good problem to have, that we have, you know, expanding mode. I am led to believe by my superiors that this is the final request. In fact, I'd like to go on record saying that this will be our final request until we do take up new locations.
Very good, thank you. Entertain a motion for approval or denial?
Move for approval.
Mr. Callender, approve.
Mr. Chairman, if you would, Mr. Callender, if you're going to move for approval, I'd like for you to possibly add to it that the dates coincide with the expiration of the timeframe to go along with the first one that we approved.
Yes, to coincide with what the proposal was, it actually stated, coincide, both of them, the temporary and the building, 24 months.
So the motion is to approve making both dates concurrent?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and I'd like to add, thanks to you too for bringing more jobs to Ascension Parish. And Mr. Eads, you need to go find him a really good site somewhere. He's working on it, good. Next is a public hearing to recommend approval or denial to the Parish Council revisions to the Parish Unified Land Development Code, Appendix 4, Section 174045A, Drainage Design and Construction Criteria.
The engineering department has brought this to you guys to do an amendment to this subdivision regulation. It'll basically clarify, it'll clarify that the design criteria that is used when designing a drainage system for development shall utilize the 24-hour rainfall event as determined by the current technical paper established by the National Weather Service. This creation is already identified in Section 175013A, therefore, Section 174045A conflicts with this requirement. This proposed amendment will make those two regulations match to clean up the discrepancy.
Do we have someone to speak for the drainage?
I'm Charlie Stevens, and I did like to make a statement for clarification purposes. I am not anti-government, I am not anti-regulations. I understand that government is to do for people what people can't do for themselves. Now, as I move around the parish, and I talk to various individuals about regulations and government, I get a multiplicity of answers, and some of the answers I get, I have to walk away and say to myself, every man has a right to his opinion.
Would you, I'm sorry, sir, would you speak a little louder?
Every man has a right to his opinion, but every man's opinion is not right. I know the importance of regulations. Regulations are designed to positively impact our community, our neighborhood, and our Where I find difficulty with some regulations is when they overreach, when they are totally not necessary, and when they place the taxpayer and property owner in a difficulty situation, and let me explain to you what this situation is. If a property owner goes out and acquire his property, and he pays for his property, and then in later years, he decides that I want to divide this property among my siblings, and rule that we have in place says to him, because of the size of this piece of property, you cannot divide this property into four pieces where each sibling can receive a piece. Then this property owner, this taxpayer, has to make a decision, which one of his siblings not going to get a piece of property? Now, I believe he is placed in a tough- Now, I believe he is placed in a tough situation surrounded by unfriendly circumstances. I believe, and I know this, in this particular situation, this is difficulty. However, this same regulation may work fine in other circumstances. So my thinking is, if this regulation gets this person into a hole, there should be some mechanism, some apparatus that can help get him out. Let's just remember, regulations are designed to help, not to hurt. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. In regard to changing the revision, is this to strengthen the ordinance, you know, explain a little?
I think I'm going to defer to our parish engineer, and he can explain it a little bit better for us.
I looked at you, but we need him.
It's basically just, we say in one paragraph to do it one way, and we say in another to do it another way, and we're just clarifying, or just making them consistent.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, we had that huge rain event a month or so ago, would this criteria have stopped flooding? No, that was just too much of a monsoon?
This is based on a 10-year storm, what we had was 25, 50-year storm.
Okay. Okay. Any other public comment, ma'am? Okay. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, this regulation basing drainage designs on a 10-year, 24-hour rain event is standard in the industry. It's not unusual at all, it's not, we're not stepping out in Ascension Parish and doing something that's not done anywhere else. It does not guarantee there won't be flooding, of course, but it is appropriate and fiscally responsible to have this sort of design criteria. If you try to design for a greater rainfall event, you couldn't afford it, and a lesser rainfall event, you would flood more often, so this is a good compromise.
Question. The question of staff, maybe, would reverting to the, or keeping the same standard that we have right now alleviate Mr. Stevens' problem in terms of the subdivision with four lots? That's still going to exist whether we keep the old standard or go to the new one, am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Entertained a motion for approval or denial?
Move for approval.
Mr. Callender, moved?
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Bishop, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Before we move to staff reports, I want to take a moment. I know he's here for a different reason, but I do want to recognize Representative Lambert, who's here tonight. I know y'all have been through a difficult session, and we appreciate you representing us so well. Why you took that job, I'm not sure, but we really appreciate it and everything you do on behalf of the citizens of this parish, so thank you very much, sir. Commissioner is sensitive to the marital status, so I'll also recognize Judge Lambert for what she does. And to make it a trifecta, I will say that their son is about to be a senior at West Point, serving the nation in a fine institution, so. Is there anybody else in the Lambert family I'm supposed to recognize? But thank you, thank you both. And thank your son, from grateful citizens. Staff report.
I think the only thing we wanted to make you guys aware of, as we're just talking about, the legislature just adopted the 2012 Coastal Master Plan, and kind of along with that, there's a lot of things that go, that have gone along with that, but there's been some things that have been trickling down that are going to start helping some of the local communities, and some of that is outreach, especially inside regulations and whatnot. I've already been to one workshop that's somewhat related to this. There's another opportunity, I think that we're going to send a staff member to, and it's open to anybody, it's open to planning officials, as it says, and to any elected officials. And I know that we had talked about last time, when we were coming through with the elevation of structures within floodplains, that we wanted additional information, and we just thought we'd bring it to everybody and just let you know that this workshop might be beneficial for you. We're going to try and have a staff member available for that, and hopefully, it'll increase with what we had discussed last time and help us with drafting some of those ordinances, so it's just more of an FYI.
Thank you. Any other information? Any other business? Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. If you'll give us five minutes or 10 minutes or so, we'll restart with the zoning meeting.